We have with us representatives from Piedmont Workforce Network as well as Goodwill Industries at Goodwill Valley. In my board report to you, I indicated that we were, I won't go through the history of what's going on, but the county has had a workforce center operated in the basement of the Public Works Building since 2011. And that arrangement was with Culpeper Human Services. There was no charge to us for that facility, provided we heated, you know, heat light, air, internet connection and things like that. The Piedmont Workforce Network went through a solicitation of competitors' bids for a one-stop center, which this one constituted Goodwill Valley, Goodwill Industries, was awarded that. And then it became to my attention that the memorandum of understanding that had been in place, the Culpeper was going to expire, and that we needed to revisit our relationship for that workforce center, that one-stop center. I involved Chairman Frame because he is the, represents this board on the Piedmont Workforce Network as one of the chief elected officials, CLEOs as they're called in this world. And so we met with Goodwill Valleys as well as Helen Coffin and Morgan Romeo from Piedmont Workforce. And Tommy Miller's been involved with some of this and see if this is a workforce development economic type of matter. I think we've worked through at least a way of continuing the operation of the center for the next year. And so what Morgan and everybody's here today is to kind of go, kind of go through an understanding of what workforce development is, what Piedmont Workforce Network does in that regard, and then Goodwill will go through what they plan, their plans for the workforce center. I'm going to distribute to you all a final MOU that just came out late this afternoon. I had already given you a draft of one that I had done last week. I haven't gone through to compare it, but I think this is pretty close to, you know, real material that is okay from what I've seen now, that you've already seen, gentlemen. So with that, I'll stop right there before inviting Morgan. I guess Morgan's the real first. Does the board have any questions for you? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, Morgan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Morgan Romeo. I'm the Assistant Director for the Piedmont Workforce Network. So I will say I'll definitely take questions afterwards. I'm going to try to give you a brief overview into our world. But Mr. Frame can definitely answer any questions for you that you have, because he's the resident expert, so. So in Virginia, our workforce system is a little bit complicated. We have been under what is known as federal legislation called the Workforce Investment Act of 1998. So that was put in place then, and basically what it did was really focused on getting job seekers back to work through training, helping them get a job as quick as possible. And after five years, the federal government is supposed to reauthorize that act, kind of looking for changes, looking at the current economy, seeing what needs to be changed about the legislation. Well, that never happened. And so actually in 2014, they finally reauthorized it. And so starting July 1st, we're getting ready to go into the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. I think they just wanted to add another acronym to our world, so. But what those two acts have in common is that they really felt like there needed to be an organization or a body over the workforce development in each of the regions in the states. And so that's what the Piedmont Workforce Network is. We are the local workforce development board for this region, which includes Orange County. And really, we have two main functions. The first one is to act as the regional convenor for workforce development. So that's bringing all the partners in, making sure that everybody's on the same page, helping job seekers as efficiently as we can to get back to work and get into occupational skills training. We also provide oversight of the funding that comes from those two federal legislation pieces. Currently, and I'll go into this a little bit later, we get about $1.3 million each year for this region to help job seekers get back to work through a variety of means. And just to give you a little bit of a picture of what Virginia looks like, every state is different, but Virginia has 15 different local workforce development areas. As you can see, we cover all of central Virginia, and we cover 11 localities, which is about 4,133 square miles. So we go all the way from Faukeer down to Nelson and over to Louisa and Orange County. So to give you a little idea of how the funding works, so because these are U.S. Department of Labor programs, the money comes directly from them to Virginia. It comes to the governor's office, but the governor's office does not have the staff and didn't really want to take on the administration of the program. So they have designated the Virginia Community College System to be their kind of fiscal and administrative agent. So once it goes to the Virginia Community College System, then it comes to the local workforce development board. And so that's kind of how we, there's a bunch of different tiers, but it's, it works as best as it can. And then, of course, there's obviously some layers within us. It does come to our area, but because we are not a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(6), we have designated the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development as our fiscal and administrative agent. And Helen Coffin is here. She's the president of that organization, and she serves as the executive director of the Piedmont Workforce Network as well in her role. So the kind of the tiered structure, we have a council made up of chief local elected officials, as Brian mentioned, and Mr. Frame is actually our representative for Orange County on that group. We have one from each locality, and I'll show you that in a minute. So they are kind of the overarching group. And then we have the Piedmont Workforce Network Board, which we have representative of business, non-business, nonprofits, workforce development agencies, and they look at a more detailed level at the Workforce Investment Act programs. We have an executive committee made up of leadership of that board, and then we have various committees for programmatic oversight. So just to give you a little indication of who's on our board and council, the CLEOs are mentioned there, Steve Nixon from Culpeper's actually our chair right now, and Dan Byers from Louisa's our vice chair. And then for the board, we have Rod Gentry as our chair and Steve Walker as our vice chair at this point. And we had Mr. Gene Kotolka as our youth council chair, but of course, he's notified us of that. So, make it a little more complicated. The money that we get each, each year, the 1.3 million, is actually divided into three different workforce programs. And those workforce programs serve distinct populations. So the first one we serve is the adult population. So these are low-income individuals, usually receiving some type of public assistance, and they are usually living at or below the poverty level. We can take underemployed individuals on that program, but so we see a lot of individuals with barriers to employment, ex-offenders, homeless, things like that. The dislocated worker population we see is the next program, and they are anybody that's been terminated or laid off through no fault of their own. I have seen, we have seen individuals kind of like on the adult program, but we've also seen the very talented software engineers that have been laid off through sequestration, government cuts, and so they just need help getting up-to-date skills and getting back to work. The youth program is very similar to the adult program, but serves ages 14 to 21. It will go up to age 24 as of July 1st. But they, while they're low income, they also have a barrier to employment. So they're going to be runaway, foster child, basic skills deficient, pregnant or parenting. And so you really see a lot of significant barriers with the youth, getting them back to work.
Before you go, but-
Yeah, go ahead.
What about the disabled? Where we're talking about, I understand we need to spend like 15% or something like that as the number for a fairly significant amount of money that needs to go for placing disabled people as opposed to leaving them in work shelters?
So I think that probably has to do with the Vocational Rehabilitation Act. I know there's now, it doesn't really pertain especially to us, but I know that there's now some legislation in place that requires federal contractors to-
So it doesn't apply to this act?
We have not heard anything like that, not yet. It's not going to say it is, but...
All right.
Did you, do you-
That was what, same question.
Oh, okay. Well, if you guys hear anything, let me know. And as Brian talked about, we do have one-stops in our area that we also oversee. So we oversee those workforce programs, but within those, we have one-stops that kind of provide a one-stop shop, if you will, for job seekers to come and get all their needs for job development. So in Planning District 9, for next year, we are going to have the Culpeper Workforce Center, which is located on 210 East Stevens Street. But we're also going to have a number of satellite centers. So the first, as you guys are going to be discussing, is the Orange Workforce Center, and the second is in Faukeer County, known as the Workplace. We also make sure to have a point of getting access to other localities in Madison and Rappahannock, just to make access for those individuals. In Planning District 10, we have a large workforce center on Hydraulic Row right across from Trader Joe's. It's really excellent. And so that center is one of our comprehensive centers. It includes all of the partners for workforce development, Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services, Virginia Employment Commission, the Community College. Those are all located in that building. And so we also have satellite centers in that area as well. And so kind of how Goodwill Industries comes into play, we have a competitive procurement process that we have to follow. And so we actually just completed that. We made our decision in March 2015. And Goodwill Industries of the Valleys has been chosen to operate our entire region. So the programs and the one-stops for one-year periods up to three-years commitment. And so we'll do that every three years unless, you know, something goes wrong. But that is a Virginia law that we have.
So it's a one-year contract with, with options to renew it annually for-
Three years.
So four in total?
No, so three in total, yes.
Three in total, two options.
Two additional years, yes, sorry. And to give you a little bit of background on our mission, so we're really here to be a proactive partner with employers and economic development leaders to provide a qualified workforce for current and future job demand. So we work very closely with Tommy Miller with Economic Development, trying to help the businesses of Orange County, and really connecting the employers and job seekers because you can train them all you want, but unless you have employers hiring for that, no point in doing it. So we have a lot of incentives for employers at this point, and we're really trying to broaden our outreach. And I think, Brian, we'll get into this a little bit more, but with our fiscal allocations and budget, we actually just now got our allocations for next year, which is a little late. And to give you guys some information, we are taking the largest cut in the state. It's about a 9% cut. We were not expecting that. And so we also, Virginia has enacted a new law, Senate Bill 1372, which will mandate that we spend 40% of our allocations on training, which is a great thing. But the way that they are calculating it, or making us calculate it, it really limits the staff that we have to do that operation. So we're looking at some cuts. We're not entirely sure how they'll look as we just got it last week, and we'll definitely keep you guys in the loop on that. And so now I'm going to let Clay Stein, who's the Senior Director for Workforce Services for Goodwill Industries, come up and tell you a little more about the Orange Workforce Center and how this applies.
Okay, as most of you know, and has been mentioned, it's currently located at 127 Bellevue Avenue in Orange. And currently, the hours of operation is Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 4:00. As mentioned before, also, it opened back in 2011. And really, the purpose of this was to help individuals with job search assistance, primarily those that are underemployed and unemployed. It also was an access point for WI services, but truly no services really were coming out of the center at that point. What changes are going to be occurring because of the WIIOA implementation, as Morgan has indicated, there's going to be some changes taking place. The biggest change is that 40% requirement. And that does require us to probably reduce our staff, not in this area, but probably in PD 10. We'll see about reducing that. And because of that reduction, yes.
Did your proposal or your bid factor in this 40% or is that, did that come after the bidding?
Yeah, we were aware of that when we went into it. So we already had planned for it. What we couldn't plan for, though, was what the allocation to this local area was going to be, because that didn't come out until later. In terms of effects, it's going to have two really big effects here in the Orange Center. As mentioned, we are currently operate, or is being operated four days a week. What we're proposing is reduce it to three days a week, from 8:30 to 4:30 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The other big change that we're proposing is that we're hoping to have at least one adult case manager, one dislocated, and one youth case manager there at the center each of those three days. Currently, what they have now is a full-time kind of greeter and maybe resource room person. It kind of helps out in the resource room. But right now, like I said, there is no real services being provided there at the center. And what our hope is, is by having adult, dislocated worker and youth case managers there, we'll be able to start now actually providing WIIOA services onsite. So now anybody that comes to the center from Orange will not have to travel to Culpeper. They can actually get all their services there onsite, from eligibility through assessments, through placement, working, and anything that they're going to need will be done right there onsite for them.
And I'm assuming that the way this reads is the adult case manager would be there, for example, on Tuesdays, and the dislocated on Wednesdays, and the youth on Thursdays.
Yes.
I mean, is that, it would, you'd break it out that way as opposed to parts of things?
Yeah, that's sort of our game plan there, yes. In addition to that, too, there'll be some other agencies also using the center as well.
Like?
Virginia Employment Commission. They're currently going there, I believe, a couple of days a week. And I've already spoke to Dick Cindy, who's the manager of that facility in Charlottesville that covers this region. And he's already given me a commitment that he would continue doing that for us. So we'll be providing staff at least 24 hours a week. Another thing that we'll be doing, which isn't currently being done, we're going to start collecting data. We're going to start using Survey Monkey and actually have an intake. So anybody that comes through the center, they will complete the intake. And this will start giving us data about who's using the center, how often they're using the center, what services they're desiring from the center. In addition to that, too, we can tailor it to whatever needs you may have here at the board. So if there's some questions you would like answered on the center itself, we could possibly add those to it as well. We'll also be providing computers and also other employment resources to job seekers. We will also be able to then start preparing reports to the board on a monthly basis. We call them dashboard reports, in which we'll be able to tell you who's been going through the center, what services they've been receiving. We can also start telling you a little bit about placement information, who's getting jobs going through the center. We'll be tracking all of that as well. Even if they don't get on our WI program, if they are using the center, we'll start tracking that information and finding out where they're getting jobs at. In addition to that, too, then we're going to-
Let me just step back a minute. So you'll have some people that are coming in, they're just using the computers, looking for jobs and some other thing. And then you, but you'll track them as well as those who come in-
Right.
And you specifically assign a case and start working that?
Yeah, those who are actually put on the program, they'll be assigned one of the three case managers, and they'll be working with them on a regular basis. Now, the other ones who come through the center, we'll still have time to work with them as well with their job search. They just probably won't necessarily get on the WIIOA program. WIIOA, as you can see with that 40% rule, are going to be really heavy in the training. So if you have somebody that comes through the center and they're really not interested in going back to school, all I want to do is get a job. And they're not really interested in an OJT, then that's where we would assist them with their job search, but that's as far as we would take it with them.
Okay. But the 40% to train with, I mean, it sounds like that money has sort of disappeared in effect. I mean, are you handling that or what?
Yeah, we're going to be the ones actually placing them in training. We've got to make sure that at least 40% of that allocation is spent on training. And so, yeah, I mean, anybody that goes through the center, especially in Orange, that's interested in training, that's going to be our first option, is to make sure we get them into some kind of training. Because that's really what the emphasis of the program. The last program is really get you a job. This one here is get you training. And so that's going to be our emphasis. The only way you wouldn't get on the program, like I said, if you're an individual who really doesn't want to go into training. And we do see that some.
Now, how much of this training is, is formalized in either a community college or, or other formal? Or how much, can you get, can you use that for people who go to a, a business for on-the-job training?
Yes, yes. We'll be able to do classroom training or occupational skills training, which is generally through the college or another certified training provider. And then also, we'll be able to work with those individuals interested in OJT's. And that kind of gets to my next point, because we're going to be working very closely with the Piedmont Workforce Network Marketing and Business Outreach Manager. And he's going to be sort of our liaison to the employers. So when he meets with the employers and they indicate they have a need for an OJT they would like, then he would come back to us, tell us exactly what they're looking for, and then we start going through our caseload to see who would be the good fit or perfect fit to send him. And of course, they interview, and then they decide whether they want to bring that person on.
So now, when you're looking at the various employers as well as various people, are you looking across the entire region, or are you trying to stay orange to orange and Culpeper to Culpeper?
Well, you know, ideally, we're going to try to orange to orange. But ultimately, what we want to do is get your population, your citizens into a job. And if there's really a great opportunity in Culpeper, and they're willing to travel, we'd be more than happy to send them to Culpeper and let them get a job.
Mr. Chairman, Clay, refresh my memory with the OJT, you will actually through WIA funds pay the hourly wage?
Yeah, we can pay up to 50% of their hourly wage for a specific period of time. And that's usually negotiated with the employer, depending on what the, the job entails and how many skill, and the skill level of the client.
Which is very appealing, at least I remember my exposure, was very appealing to employers to receive these funds for somebody, you know, kind of get in, get fitted-
Oh, absolutely.
See how they perform and, and offset some of the expense of them bringing these workers on.
Yes.
There's quite a bit of appeal. So as I understand, that's something you'd certainly be pushing for.
Yeah, we will. And I know that Sean, who's the Marketing and Business Outreach Manager, that's something he'll be definitely discussing with any employer here in Orange.
And I know Tommy from Economic Development, working with the existing employer, certainly makes them aware in his visits and things like this. So.
Right.
Do you have any history as to how the money is likely to flow in terms of classroom training dollars versus OJT versus in the other?
Well, I would probably say on average, probably about 85% of the money usually goes to classroom training. And the rest usually goes to employer. Right now, we have, I think this year, we've had about eight, maybe 10 clients in Charlottesville that did OJT's. Again, it's finding the employer and finding the right fit for us to go that route. But if we can, we certainly go that route. And then finally, officially, the center here in Orange will be considered an official satellite center of the PWN. It'll be on their website and marketed as such. In terms of Orange County's responsibilities, what we're hoping for is for you guys to help us with publicizing the Orange Workforce Center, get the word out to people. Because we really, in those days, we're open. We would love to have a full house and get as many people in there as possible. Like I said, too, we're also going to have other agencies. We're going to open up the doors for them as well. So Department of Rehabilitation and Native Services, the VEC, any agency that's part of the workforce network. We're going to open the doors to them as well, encourage them to use the center as much as possible on the days that we're there. We're also going to have the VEC, Virginia Employment Commission, to offer some various workshops during that time that we're open as well. We're hoping that they'll be able to do like resume writing, job searches, unemployment workshops, the whole gamut that they usually offer in Charlottesville. We're hoping they have offered here as well. Let's see, another item that we're hoping to have the Orange County responsibilities will be is to provide the space, as mentioned before, at no charge, including the HVAC, electricity, internet, custodial service, et cetera. And also participate in the evaluation of the Orange Workforce Center no later than January 1st of 2016. And this will be led by the Piedmont Workforce Network, Goodwill Industries, and the board, because we really want to get your input, see where things are going well, things aren't going well. Because really, our hope is, is to really partner with you and really make this the center that you guys are really wanting in the community.
Do you have any criteria that would, you would consider or would be recommended for evaluating this?
I'm sure, but at that time, we'll have something in place. I don't know if we have anything right now. This, right now, the state is kind of-
Which seems to me that we ought to, we ought to get that early-
Right.
So that whoever's working that-
Sure.
Knows what, what they're trying to achieve.
Right.
I think that what we'll probably be looking at is really if the three days, since we're cutting back to three days instead of four, looking is, is that what we need to be doing? Is it four? Is it five days? Is it two days? Really looking at job placements. Are we capturing the people that we want to capture? Are we getting the right information to help you guys know where your constituents are getting employed? So I think that's what we're thinking about in evaluation, making sure that we're staffing adequately and gathering the right data for you.
Part of the January 1st date came from me. I'll, I'll fess up to that. The reason being in talking with our finance director and working with them, if we're looking at expanding or if there's a contraction or the generosity of Goodwill may wane for the, for the next year, I'd much rather have that information and have that understanding in whether we have to make some tough choices or whether what we do as part of the budget cycle than waiting until May, so that we're not kind of back to where we are right now.
I understand. But also, it's, it's part of, okay, maybe we need to think about our own expectations about that as well. Because, you know, I mean, I want everybody that gets in there to get a job and be well-trained. I mean, but that's, you know, pretty, you know, 100% is pretty-
We'll take that down.
Not just that, a little.
I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Frame. I think one of the things that's going to move this farther along in that is the data of collecting actually who uses it and whether the placements, we weren't necessarily having that data collected.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, the evaluation may also drive the data collection.
Sure.
A couple of questions. One, the computers and all the hardware that's in the facility now, is that staying or is it being changed out?
So currently, that, that is def, that's owned by the Piedmont Workforce Network. We've done inventory, so that they, it has the potential to stay. It will depend on the traffic. I think we're going to look at that as how many people are coming in. Currently, there's nine, nine computers there. And so really looking at, do we need nine? Do we need five? Do we need 15? So that's what we're looking at this first couple of months.
Initially, though, we'll keep everything as-is.
Okay, so everything's staying as-is. My, my other question somewhat of concern, this is Goodwill of the Valley. There's a reason we're getting Goodwill of the Valley because the majority of the Planning District is in the coverage area of the Goodwill of the Valley? Or are you seeking and the, we unfortunately are part of the Fredericksburg-
Right, you are part of the Rappahannock Goodwill. And we've actually are partnering with them. So it's a joint effort in PD 9. So we'll be working with both, both groups. Anything dealing with the HR piece of our case management stuff is being done by the Rappahannock, but the day-to-day operations is being done by Goodwill Industries.
Okay, so it's cooperative. It's, it's not that you're going to be attempting to poach people into another area?
No, 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 no. We're, we're working together on it. In fact, our center manager is actually with the Rappahannock Goodwill.
Okay, one more request along with that. If, if you all do take this over and operate it, I would highly encourage and request that the Orange Goodwill store-
Right.
-be cleaned up. I made that request to Rappahannock-
Okay.
Because if you go to any of their other locations, they're very clean, very well-organized, and they look very nice. Quite honestly, it looks like a dump in front of the Orange store. And I think it would be some very Goodwill-
Definitely pass.
-make it a better-looking operation there.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I'll pass that along to them. Last thing then, we're looking for then is to provide identification signs in front of the building, because we want to make sure foot traffic comes through, and they know that's where the center is and how to get to it.
A question with that.
Yes.
If you put the sign in front of the building, that's all well and good, however, you have less-than-limited parking at the front of the building.
Right.
The majority of people that are going to use the center are going to park behind the building. Would it be preferred to have the signage there or in the front?
Or both?
Or both. It's a hard rotation to-
Ideally, it'd probably be best in both. It would be my choice, because that way, then they would have a, you know, either way coming in and out. They don't know where to-
Yeah, because it is, it's a difficult site access.
Right, right. And we would like it on both. And of course, your signage, too, will indicate that you are part of the Piedmont Workforce Network, so that'll, you know, tie that all in together.
I think we can accommodate both of them.
Any other questions?
Do you anticipate any significant issues going from four to three days? I mean, is that, based on the traffic that you've, that you've been seeing and things that you said?
Well, what we're going to do is we'll start off with three. And if traffic is really booming, we're not opposed to possibly expanding it to another day, make it four days. Our problem right now is just staffing. We're trying to see, we're going to go with three and see how it goes with that. And then also, as other partners start using the center, that may be a way to keep the center open for additional days. And then also, as other partners start using the center, that may be a way to keep the center open for additional days.
One other thing occurred to me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you recall during your strategic planning session, there was an interest in the board, about workforce development, what the county's efforts were in that regard, and it was more of a macro look at all things, certainly Piedmont Workforce, county schools, and there's any number of avenues, and so maybe this fall, once we get a little bit farther down and you all get some experience, certainly including that as part of this, I think we were talking about bringing kind of a summit together, maybe the school board and everybody kind of sorting through what we're doing in more of an educational, if there's gaps, what might have some interest of the board, and that may be a good precursor to our strategic planning session.
Okay, any other questions? You have anything else? Okay, well, thank you.
Very good explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. All right, gentlemen, well, you've heard the presentation, Tom, I mean, this was what was sent out last week.
I'm fine with that, I already reviewed it.
It is in a position for you all to take action today if you're that calm. This isn't one year, so I think Mr. Frame and I, we're kind of setting this out.
I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, I've, I've looked at it, compared it, it's pretty much exactly identical to the one that came out earlier. And I guess it was true, both, both versions, I would have, would have expected this agreement to be between the county and the Piedmont Workforce Network. This, this seems to be directly with Goodwill of the Valley, that, that's not necessarily good or bad, I just, I, I.
Yeah.
Who's the holder of the, are we the holder of the contract or?
It's a good, good, good question, let me try to understand the, 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 the relationships here. Piedmont Workforce Network receives the funds that are tracked through the Virginia Community College system from the Department of Labor, got that? Those funds are then to contract for an operator of these various off facilities. Goodwill of the Valleys is the operator of the facilities, and so we're, our relationship was them as the operator. Their funding comes from Piedmont, got it? Their contract is between Goodwill and to be able to make these centers available.
Does anybody have a problem with this? Questions? Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, sir, I'd like you all.
Just to authorize the signature.
I have a motion for authorizing the county administrator to sign this MOU, does he have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you all, we'll get this signed up. That concludes the only other item I have from the agenda, I, I do know Mr. Crozier wanted if there was time available to talk about some, some challenges we've had recently with used tires and dumping of that. County attorney and I have talked about what our enabling legislation is, but it's not what we can do now, what we can't do now, whether there's a regulatory area you all might wanna explore.
Let's go ahead and discuss it, we've got twenty-five minutes. Yeah, I saw a, a second pile from the.
Yes, Monrovia Road.
Yeah, okay.
We're probably going to have to have some more discussion. Apparently these tires, the landowner is actually trying to dispose of the tires. They had gone to the landfill, now we're told that it was going to be rather costly. And this was their next step in trying to alleviate the problem. They have a renter that apparently stored all these tires and then moved out. So the people that currently have them are trying to do the right thing, just not in the best manner, I guess, is the.
But we're, I mean, I saw a second even larger situation, was it twenty?
Yeah, twenty, twenty south.
Oh, yeah, twenty was the first one.
Yeah, and then on Monrovia Road.
Monrovia is the second, yes.
In both cases, I mean, it's dozens at least.
It's roughly two hundred per pile. I took pictures of both of them, I, I.
But in both cases, it was a renter that.
It's the same.
The same thing.
Yes.
Same person?
It's a single problem, it's a single issue.
And.
The, the original, if, if, if we're not completely crosswise, the piece of property where they're dumping, originators out on mountain track. Apparently, these, the people who own the land apparently own multiple tracts of land, so they're kind of setting up a franchise situation there. They, they, their, their, their tenant was actually in the business of hauling tires away from tire stores.
Ah, okay, that was gonna be my next question.
At some point, he, he got the right idea, he would stack them on the back of his property, that way he didn't have to pay to dispose of them. The, when I came by the one coming in today, there was actually a truck and trailer there picking up the tires, some of them. I don't know if they're gonna take all of them or not, from a local nursery, I'm guessing they've got some, they've figured out some use for them that they could use the tires for. So, I, I would, you know, I mean, I, I think this particular problem, we can probably address just by addressing it, you know what I mean?
But we also have an issue of people having metal dumps in their yards, which, per our current ordinance, as long as it stays under two hundred square feet, they're fine, but is that a business, is it, you know? We get into a lot of interesting things there. And I don't know if the rest of the board is so inclined to tackle this or hold off for a little while and do some more research.
I can give you kind of a quick update on the law, the tires, there's actually a specific state code provision on tires. And it's a violation of state code if it's two hundred or more tires. And it becomes a misdemeanor with a pretty hefty fine, and it can be prosecuted under state law. If it's over five hundred tires, it becomes a felony. And so that's, that's a state code provision that's out there now, ten point one something, I, I've got it upstairs, I didn't plan on doing it before the meeting. But, um, the other thing, which we've kind of discussed once before, is under Virginia code, there's an enabling statute we've not taken advantage of. We could, if we wanted, it's fifty-two point two, I think, nine oh two, and it authorizes us to ban trash, rubbish, debris, which would catch tires, catch metal dumps. Problem is, in the discussions we've had before, it would catch a lot of other farm, maybe, that people pile stuff up and, and the question came up on selective enforcement. But we are authorized by state code to ban trash debris, keep people from leaving trash in their yards or on their property. There is a state code section that allows localities to adopt such legislation, we have not.
Are there, are there provisions to give us any flexibility in terms of how long it could be there or, or, or how much it could be or something like that?
Well, I mean, the way that works in the real world is most localities that do it, do it by complaint, complaint basis. The problem is, it's, whereas the positive side of it is you can use it to keep some derelict places clean, the negative side of it is neighbors use it against each other. When you have these, these little wars going on and neighbors will report each other.
That's why I was saying, if you had something that, that is a, you know, I mean, we said, what, two hundred square feet now or something like that? We said, if we had something that was with a maximum height of forty feet also.
So the problem with the two hundred square feet is it's a zoning regulation, zoning enforcement is a challenge.
No, I, I was, I was thinking more of, of taking advantage of that one, I'm just wondering if you had some flexibility in terms of how you, how you created the ordinance.
Well, we could, we could draft a trash and debris ordinance that says trash and debris in excess of X square feet, or we could say specific kinds of trash and debris, we could say, you know, tires or, or whatever, we could, we could designate what types of trash and debris, or, or you can actually have weeds, or there, there's all kinds of things that allows you to do, that you can eliminate weeds and eliminate, so we could identify specifics if we wanted to. The, the problem always comes in, you say, okay, we're not gonna allow tires, but then we don't mention, some guy's got pallets. Then the next, the next neighbor, wait a minute, you know, you don't allow tires, but you do allow pallets.
Well, not only that, but then you have the agricultural component.
Exactly.
That, those are normal components of the operation.
No, one of the options would be, it doesn't necessarily address this tire issue, but one of the things that some jurisdictions do is they limit it to, to more dense residential areas, where you say, okay, we're gonna have a trash and debris ordinance that's applicable in residential areas of a density of less than, you know, two acres per home or something, or you, or you identified by your zoning district or boundaries. And you say that.
Wouldn't, would not have taken care of this tire issue.
Well, so I said it wouldn't actually address this issue.
Right, but hopefully we, we've got this where it's.
Well, there, is there any interest in trying to create a, an ordinance that is, that's got some flexibility, or not flexibility, but, and, and as I said, the flexibility is in creation, the ordinance, so once you, once the ordinance is created, it's gotta be a pretty defined line.
When rural jurisdictions are loath to adopt these, I must, just my research, rural jurisdictions are loath, it's more the urban areas that, that adopt these things.
My, my problem with, with, with jumping into this and sort of jumping into it on this end and saying, let's adopt an ordinance, or let's, let's, you know, is that this is, this is, one person had a problem, they thought, they came up with, they probably thought it was a clever idea to get rid of some of their problems. And, and, and now we're talking about adopting an ordinance, and I just think that's, that's more than what we need right here. I really think that we can, we can work with the person in this situation, probably, we at least need to try to work with them to see if we can, you know.
Has he tried to go back to his renter or to?
Well, the renter is gone.
Yes, it's, they apparently, like I said, they went to the landfill.
Understand, the individual who's got the stuff piled on his land.
Right, I mean, he would seem, he would have recourse against his renter.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's two different issues here, there's, there's the issue they have of, they got tires on their land, which is not really the county's problem. Not to say that we should necessarily not try to work with them to fix the problem. That's, that's, that's issue one, issue two, which is the more exigent one at the moment, is the fact that there's piles of tires on, on the side of the road and, and, and that's not really a good idea for a lot of different reasons.
One other option, which kind of addresses what Supervisor Johnson is saying, is we can proceed on an individualized basis on a nuisance claim. So example, if somebody had two hundred tires stacked up, I could in good, good faith, go to a judge and say, this is a nuisance, it's a mosquito breeding ground and, and, you know, rats and snakes and whatever and.
There's a fire issue too.
Health and, and on a nuisance case, I just have to convince a judge it's a health and safety concern, but we could, without passing an ordinance, if one of these pops up and nobody does anything about it, we could proceed on nuisance claims.
You know, I, I, this is kind of like, you know, you got a next door neighbor who's playing their radio too. And you can call the sheriff, or you can go next door and say, hey Joe, could you maybe turn your radio down a little bit? And most neighbors, most neighbors will turn the radio down, but if you call the sheriff first, and the sheriff comes out there, then he's gonna have their radio cracked up every chance he gets.
And, and, and the sheriff doesn't have any ordinance.
I would like to see the county try to, try to approach, whether it's Brian or Tom or, or somebody zoning, whatever, approach this person and say, you know, we got a problem here, we understand you've got a problem, but we got a problem too, can't we fix this problem? And just so that they understand that it's really not a good idea to have piles of tires along, along the road. It is a health problem, it is a safety problem, you, you know, I don't give anybody any ideas, but somebody wanting to make mischief could make a, a real big mess real quick. That's gonna have higher authorities than, than us out here.
We got the EPA.
And it's gonna be, it, it will go, it will not go easy for the landowner in that situation, I guarantee it. So, you know, I'd like to try the, the kind of the low.
Okay, I just, I was just, I was just offering if anybody wanted to try it, and obviously you don't, is anybody else interested? Well, and, and we have ordinances that deal with, you know, junk cars and all sorts of things that, let's say we're not high on the priority list for enforcement as it is. I happened to see one yesterday returning from a meeting, that at least two people I'm looking at were in the same meeting. I, I just shook my head when I went by there, I think, I think the number I counted was like fourteen, I admit I was driving forty miles an hour, so I didn't stop him. But, you know. And so, and, and we've been through the noise ordinance drill and, and these kind of things, I mean, I, we're not, Tom's right, rural jurisdictions find it a challenge to deal with these matters, other than in very narrow cases. This, this may be an, an opportunity just to try to go ahead and see if there's another way of dealing with this particular incident in situ, in this particular situation and try to resolve it.
We can start the vetting process of possibly coming up with a long-term solution that is reasonable, rather than the.
I, I get the sense that the, the long-term solu, solution is each individual one trying to resolve it without, without any ordinances.
And, and that may be, it, it may be, but.
And, and, and this is a significant problem now, but it hasn't been around for thirty years.
Right, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's something that needs to be dealt with, but it's not, it's not like it's the fourth time in the last month it's happened.
This, this particular, but to me, just in general, maybe we just need to start thinking, not necessarily doing anything right now, but start thinking about the litter and junk in general.
Well, we have a litter committee issue that's going on, so we're gonna see if we can follow.
Well, and again, that, but I mean, listening to the fact that we're not interested in an ordinance is, is a, is a good, is a good segue into whatever the litter, litter committee tries to put together. Not trying to do, put together a, an ordinance, but to, but to find other solutions.
Well, but, I mean, I'm not saying that, that any and all ordinances are bad, there could be good ordinances, there could be ordinances that are drawn up with, with great precision and subtlety and, you know.
And we always find out later that whoever drew.
If it's not in, in the heat of the moment, that's not usually the case. And we wind up really causing more problems.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in passing a law to solve every problem, I mean, that's the.
I wish there was a law to solve every problem, but it just is.
It is called the golden rule, how about that? We put that into legislation?
We're just a top, love thy neighbors myself, there you go. Follow them, solve them.
On this particular case that, that you have brought to us, Jim, I, I think it is fair, or at least speaking for one, that, that we let the landowners know that we're, you know, we're most anxious for them to find a solution, we're willing to help them in, in reasonable manners that we can, and it's, it's important that a solution be found, you know, forthwith.
Well, it won't hurt to let them know they're currently, if, if there's two hundred tires there, which Kurt seemed to think there was at least, that they're, they're in violation of state law and, and could be facing criminal prosecution.
As long as that's done in a non-threatening way at, at the moment, because what we, let's, let's solve the problem.
Well, that's the point, we tell them the, the state has this law that you're facing criminal, we're trying to prevent that coming down.
Let me make a suggestion to the board, I'll factor what Mr. Johnson said, it was me, obviously, this is not a zoning issue, or I'd have Mr. Frederick deal with it as the zoning administrator, if the board sense is, I can, with the county attorney's assistant, draft a letter to this property owner, advising of the, the board's interest in this matter, that it speedily be resolved in, in a manner that, that, you know, protects the public health, safety, welfare, we'll also advise them of this.
Imminent peril.
This, this, this state law that could apply, and that we're certainly willing to work with them. I, I, I don't get it, and we charge fees for tires to be disposed at the landfill, so I don't see that as something special that we're going to, to deal with, but I will certainly communicate the avenues of disposing of tires and certainly the landfill, we'll take these tires. But just saying that the board's interested in seeing this resolved, and, and, and resolved in a, in a matter of, of, of reasonable manner.
The sheriff is also involved in this as well, he was con, he was contacted.
He hasn't dumped any tires.
Right, yeah, he, he was, he was actually contacted by, by the property owner, because of.
Trying to, trying to get back, okay.
Apparently, it's, it's perhaps as many as a thousand tires.
Yes.
That this person left on the lawn.
Wow.
It, it's, too bad they can't find it, because if that is a.
Well, I think, I think, I think probably can be found, I don't know if it'd be, any, any, you know. Well, I think, I think, I think perhaps it could be found, but I don't know if it'd be, any, any, you know, any, any blood to turn-
But, but, but then you said we, now we're talking criminally. Now we're talking felony if we can find the guy.
But you'd be talking three hots and a cot, because I don't think he's going to be able to take care of the issue himself.
Well, it is, it's, it really is the landowner's responsibility. The landowner, the, the landowner does have a responsibility to kind of mind what's going on.
That's right, I mean, uh, you know.
Well, let me ask, before, before we get to the point of sending a, a letter, even a nice letter, i- is, is, is it our sense at this point, the property owner is being responsive and and is
Well-
taking reasonable steps, or do they need, do we need to motivate the property owner?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I really think the first thing to do is, is, is to pick up the phone and call these people and, and talk to them.
Well, do they stick a free to good home sign on the tires?
Yes, they're free, they're, use tires free.
Yeah, boy, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm-
I know that's a reasonable, responsible step, but-
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, don't take my jumping to a letter of-
Well, I think, well, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know why-
Who would think that people wanna pick up old tires for free?
Well, there, well, no, there's some people that would use old tires, people that go through, I'm sure some people's-
Farmers use a lot of tires.
And found of, yeah, and there were, like I said, there was-
Well, the fact that I need to get a pay for them at the dump strikes me as it seems like an unreasonable expectation.
They, they, they thought it was, I'm sure they thought it was a clever idea, but I don't think I, from what I've seen so far, doesn't make me think they're unreasonable, and if the county goes to them and says, you know, this is really not a good idea, this is why that they won't address the situation. Now, if they
So let's, let's-
Throw up a stone wall, you don't wanna work business.
Prefer a phone call first?
I think-
Something, yeah, something a little bit less formal than a piece of stationery on county, on county stationery signed by the county administrator citing state code, I mean, I, I think we I think that's step two or three, not one.
Yes, I agree.
And I, I would agree, I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel with board's direction, is a phone call for me saying, hey, it's come to my attention, the board.
The board, it come to the board's attention, the board's to ask you to see if there's a way of resolving it.
And maybe they'd like to go in partnership with another tire store and have a used tire store down thirty-three somewhere.
I, I, I will certainly, yeah. I will certainly-
He's always helping you out, isn't he?
I'll certainly make the property owner aware that there, there could be these other state regulations that could apply in these because of the health, safety, welfare. Not that doing anything, but understanding this isn't just, you know, a cur- you know, it's courtesy call, but it's a thing that because of this number of tires, this could get beyond-
I- is there a possibility of a bulk disposition that's better, that's a better deal than the landfill? I mean, I, you, you I, I see a trailer at your place that you're, I don't think it's going to the landfill.
No, no, um, no, I mean, there are, and I actually, uh, uh, told the gentleman that, that, that might be his, his least expensive way to go, is just to, just to have a tractor trailer brought in, but, um, you know, it's, uh, it, it's one of those things where, it's one of those situations where, you know, you've had them, I'm sure we've all had them, where uh, you had, you kinda came to a disagreeable realization, then twenty minutes later, it, it, it started to kick in how really disagreeable it was, and when you woke up the next morning, it sunk in further, and, and I, I I, I think they just kinda need to come to grips with it and realize that, yeah, they're, it's, this is gonna cost them something, and that's part of the cost of doing business, which, which owning rentals is, it's a business.
Yeah, yeah.
So they just kinda need to bite the bullet and get it fixed. Because the situation's not, not gonna get better on its own.
That's fine with me.
And, and I'm not sure whose district they're in, I don't know if it's me or you, Jim, I, I don't, I really don't know.
Well, one set of tires is in mine, I think the other one's in yours, but I don't know who the land, I, I don't know what their residence is.
Yeah, but I actually don't get a piece of land where the tires are actually originating from.
Oh, that, yeah, I don't even, it, it, it's on mountain track?
I think so, yeah.
I think on the mountain track now is it's two, 'cause it turns into Cox's Mill.
Okay.
And that's still two.
It, but I don't, see, I don't know where they live, so that would be, that would actually be good information. Brian, if you could get that to whoever-
And the sheriff, I'm sorry, I was-
Where that gentleman li- where the, where the couple lives, I guess it's a man and woman, uh, who actually are the landowners. Be nice to know where they actually live.
I, I believe the sheriff has-
If they're my constituents, I'd like to contact them, if they're not my constituents, then I wouldn't presume.
I, I'm, make, make, whoever constituents they are, the supervisor wants to make the initial phone call.
I, that's, no, I didn't say that. I said, if they're my constituents, I'd like to talk to them, but I don't, I don't want, if they're somebody else's constituents, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna do that.
Would that be before or after I talked to them?
That's a separate issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's research. Apparently, there are several properties involved too.
Yeah.
In dir- in different districts.
Tenant that lived at multiple properties or?
No, 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 no.
The tires were all-
The tenant left the tires, the landowners now dispersing them.
Right. They, they have divided them between the properties, and, uh, I, and it's either I, I think it may actually be on Monrovia Road, where the distribution point might be.
I'll need to inquire as to the rationale of, of, you know, dispersing.
Yeah.
Yes.
They might be down to a hundred and ninety-nine tires per site, I think may be part of the issue.
If I knew the law, that's where I'd be.
Exactly.
You go count them, it's only one ninety-nine.
The effort that it took to think through and then do all that versus-
And they're nice freehand signs there too, red paint.
I, I would-
But I have to tell you, this, this handling these, these, these dirty water-filled tires is no fun. And, 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 believe me, I have a lot of experience with it, and, uh, I, I really don't know the end result that they're coming out ahead of. It's a lot of work, tires are not easy.
So you can, you can dispose them at a lot less cost than the landfill, is that right? With what you, the system you use?
Well, I, I can dispose them at less cost than the landfill would charge me if I were to take them to the landfill, yeah. I think probably what I'm paying is probably roughly what the county's paying.
So if I understand the directions of the board, it was, I will find out who the property owners are and whoever's district they reside in, not the property, but where they're actually, I'll let that respective supervisor know. I will contact them by phone, saying this has come to the board's attention. They are interested in what their plans are to resolve this, and then I'll kinda work through in a way that kinda confirms. If I can wrap this up into a letter to them confirming what they told me, then that kinda, this is to confirm my understanding that-
Yeah, I think that's good idea.
All right.
All right.
All right, I've got my direction.
Okay. I guess we're ready to start the regular meeting.
Wow, rock that in, right.
I think he stood out as someone who sent you one.
Okay.
You don't really need me to write over it.
I'm gonna move that item to the regular table.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, their coffee.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering about that.
What's that?
There's no drinks in there.
We'll, we'll get that fixed.
We have to drink coffee.
Buzzed cutback, we ran out of, we ran out of drinks.
Been hot in the hall, haven't some-
Gotta wait for July first.
All right. All right, uh, call the meeting order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, may your divine wisdom direct all of our deliberations and be revealed in all the decisions that we make. We ask that your grace and blessings bestowed upon the men and women who have been called to serve our country far away from their families. Protect them and bring them home safely. Amen.
Okay. Uh, we have an item that was added to the consent agenda, item five D. I wanna move that to the, uh, I guess that would be new business, make that item nine A. That's the budget amended supplemental trend.
You could, you could do that under, under consent agenda.
No, I, I know that, but, uh-
If there's some discussion.
No, we wanna do, at least have some discussion on it since, uh, okay. Uh, any other changes to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been approved, five zero. Special presentations. Mr. David.
Yes, sir, we have some service awards, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
While you're making it up here, uh, we have, uh, four service awards, uh, one individual is here, the other three are not attending, but, uh, let me, uh, first read them off. Um, pleased to report, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and the audience, uh, Major and Chief Deputy Michael Cass is being recognized for twenty-five years of service to the county.
He's not that old. Twenty-five years of public service, I think that's great. And I don't think enough people know how important public service is to our society. And I'm glad that, that some of you've stuck around that long, I really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And we have three other individuals, uh, all of them work in our department, solid waste collection attendants. Uh, Alton Willingham, ten years, Janice Dillow, ten years, and John Carter, all have served ten years. Uh, and those are all of our service awards, Mr. Chairman.
At the council.
Yeah, they're, they're working. All right. Uh, next item is the business spotlight. Uh, Ginger Somerville Grant, Somerville Grant, owner of Med Spa Virginia.
Hi.
Hi.
I am Ginger Somerville Grant, and I do own Med Spa Virginia Total Wellness Center. And I grew up in this area, and my sister and I came back a few years ago, and we wanted to start a business in our hometown. So we started Hamilton's Day Spa, we had two employees and a little over eight hundred square feet. And here we are, four years later, with fifteen employees and ten thousand square feet. So we've grown a lot in the past four years.
Four years.
Yeah, we merged with, um, Med Spa Virginia Total Wellness Center, which used to be in Culpeper Hospital, run by Dr. Carl Byer. We bought his med spa and merged it here into Orange, and he came and he is now our medical director. And we have a full-service, um, med spa slash wellness center, we do, um, we have a full-service hair salon. We also do manicures, pedicures, we do full-body treatments, we have the only Vichy shower in central Virginia.
What?
It's a Vichy shower, it's where you get, it's awesome. Lay on this table in a big, huge wet room, and you get a body scrub or a body wrap. And then this shower covers your entire body with five different heads, and it massages you with warm water. It's very nice. Um, so we have, we have that. We also do, um, full-body massage, we do facials. Um, and then the medical spa part, Dr. Byer does injections, um, botox and filler. He also does spider vein, uh, correction with a laser. He does laser skin rejuvenation, um, browns and reds, like skin rejuvenation, we also do hair removal. And Dr. Byer also does varicose vein therapy, um, he does, um, EVLT, which is intravenous laser treatments to, um, get rid of varicose veins in your legs. We also have fitness, we have a full yoga studio that can hold up to thirty people. We do bar classes, and starting in September, we're gonna add TRX and spinning classes. We have a nutritionist and we have an acupuncturist, so we pretty much have the whole area covered. And we're just glad to be in Orange, we're glad to be back home, um, and we just hope that you guys come support us. We're in the Silk Mill complex, in the, uh, spot where M-SAG used to be, directly above the chiropractor. And we have that whole second floor up there. Yeah, so you guys come visit us. Thank you.
Pleasure to-
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
You've seen it, yeah, you've gotten a tour.
And, uh-
Bryce Reeves was up there.
Congratulations on that, on that growth, that's really impressive.
Thank you, thank you. We hope to continue to grow, and Orange is supporting us, and we're doing really well. Thank you very much.
Shirley.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the George Washington Carver Agricultural Research Center report. Mr. Stafford.
Yes, indeed. Thank you for having me, and this young lady was very helpful in make, helping me get here today. She represented you well by phone. So, um, I've worked the job I'm in now for thirty years. And the time I've got left, I'm gonna devote to this project, whether it works or not. And my boss says that's okay, and the Director of Extension says that's okay too. So we'll see where this goes. And, uh, so far, we're making progress. We've gotten a feasibility study grant, and I'll get into that in a minute, but the, uh, the Old School on fifteen once was a regional high school, and we'll get to that in more detail, I'll not jump ahead. But, um, regional is an important word in this, that's the reason I'm here today. This isn't gonna be a, a Culpeper effort. The, uh, the students and the citizens that would use this center, we think are in a regional setting. It would be across more than five counties, but that would be the core of the, of the group. My chairman of the Board of Directors couldn't be with us today, Jim Hoy, but he's an important reason why I continue with this. Jim was the, the, uh, engineer for the county when we first started talking about this. He took a job with the town later as the Director of Public Works, that's why he's not here today, he's with town business. But he didn't quit the project at the time, he was still interested, still committed, he's a farm boy from the valley. An engineer by training and military, um, experience as well, but Jim's continued involvement and willingness to be our chair is one of the key links to me being able to move forward and, and, and bring the rest of the, the group along with me. My colleague Steve Hopkins sends his regrets for not being able to be here today, he's pursuing higher education out west somewhere for his son. And, uh, he says that's a priority for him today, and that's, that's, uh, that's all he can do. So, uh, an overview of what I am gonna say, so we've got an organization and, and a mission of that organization. I'm gonna give you a progress update, uh, facility concept plan, some ideals about George Washington Carver, the namesake of that school. Um, and educational exchange, and that, under, underneath of that is students receiving and, and those who have information and new knowledge delivering. And then the four primary focus areas and partners thus far in, uh, in this effort. Jim and I usually give this presentation together, it works pretty good. And so he gives part and I give part, I can do this, so, uh, we've organized a board of directors, and, uh, those of you that have helped start a group know well the, the effort it is just to get it off the ground. And we've established our mission is to be agriculture, research, and education. And so in my work as an extension agent, research and education just falls right in together, and it's, it's a natural for me to be involved in this. We are incorporated here in Virginia, we're a registered five oh one C three. Interesting that the IRS turned our application around in about thirty days with an eight hundred dollar fee attached to it. They weeded out the SCOTF laws and, uh, the serious ones, and, and I think they were looking for something good to hang their hat on too. And this, this may have that for them. We have an expandable lease in place with Culpeper County, uh, expandable means that we can grow that lease and occupy more of the space there. We don't occupy all of the, the school at this point, but we've got a, a beachhead or a footing, so to speak, and that's really all I wanted, was the, a place that we could say we're, we're, we're using and, and we're, we're in force there. We plan to have a lease with Battle Park Farms, so the landowner there along fifteen, that, that farms most of that between Midway Store and the Baptist Home, the Inskeep family, they're, they're very interested in learning and in helping further agriculture, and so we've already been using their land without a lease, and I spoke with their brother-in-law this morning, I said, now Charlie, we need to get that lease done. It's, it's not as much about what, what's in it as to what it means to those who are watching us, that we have something on in writing. He said he understood that. And so, uh, this feasibility study grant proposal has been submitted and approved, so um, we're in the midst of that at this, at this time. So in our, in our narrative to the IRS, we had to tell them what we're gonna do, and these are the things we, we talked about. And we'll get into that more in depth, but we had to say, you know, what our, what our, our plan was. History there at the bottom, pretty key to the graduates of that school, and it's fifty years worth of diplomas and only twenty of them to the regional black high school graduates, and about thirty to vocational school graduates. So we want those two groups to come together and, and, and honor their history there, it's, it's an important part of this whole effort. So a little progress, so- So a little progress. So our bylaws and with the help of Frank Thomas here, he's given us some, some pro bono support. And I think now that we've, we've launched out of the nest and are gliding, he's kind of saying, alright, keep going. So he's helped us make that progress from the legal side. We've held monthly board meetings now for over a year. We've switched to a quarterly session. In fact, we meet tomorrow for our quarterly meeting. We have a few dollars in the bank and enough to pay some expenses. And we, we held officially, we have to have an annual meeting and we held our first one in fourteen. And we've adopted a conflict of interest policy. So one of the Inskips is on our, our board and so he can't really vote on a lease and what the lease with his family would be. That would, that would go against the conflict of interest. He'd have to abstain from that, as you well know, in your own experience, where if you had some personal interest. We've started promoting, promoting what we do and so we did that with the county farm tour last year with an exhibit. And this year, we expect to bring people to the school where we can tour and talk more about our plans. And we've got a website, just a common piece of action there. If you're in business or if you're out in public, you've got a website of one way or the other. And that's there if you look at, at your leisure. So this shows the facility as it is today and so it's over seventy-two thousand square feet. But the main school building is about forty thousand square feet. So that's my focus today, today in terms of, of developing that facility for ag research and education. And the outlying buildings, mostly shop buildings, big open spaces that can be done separately. But for the, for the start, we like to focus on the classroom, the two-story classroom part, just south of Culpeper on Fifteen. Really regionally, essentially located. That wasn't a mistake it was put there. And so it's not bad for Orange and Madison to get there. Easy for Culpeper. A little more difficult for Rappahannock. And the Southern End Falk here are very accessible. So we, through Jim's connections there in the town of Culpeper, one of his folks was able to create this, this rendering. And so it's a concept of just kind of looking back and some little bit of forward vision and, and to get people thinking about what might be done with it. That little logo there in the corner, you've seen it a couple of times already. We spent some time working on that and it's important to point out that we have the 501(c)(3), the George Washington Carver Ag Research Center. And then the building itself, we hope to be the Carver Piedmont Agricultural Institute. So, but that's, that's the name of the facility if we could. So Mr. Carver had some ideals and there are many and he held patents. And his underlying motivation, I think, was to add value to things and to improve things and to, to innovate. So those words added value and to, to have people gain experience by doing. And that's a fundamental of many youth programs and in 4H, it's certainly a common thing. But Mr. Carver's significant in all this. He, he's kind of in the, he's, he's some of the underpinning of, of his, his thoughts and his processes and what he realized about agriculture and, you know, some, many, many uses for many products. And so he's, he's an important part of this. George Washington was a fine man and he helped us in the military and he helped us as our, our national leader and he did many things, but George Washington Carver is a different, different cat. He's, he's, that ag connection and, and his involvement in agriculture is very important. So this business of exchange, a teacher in front of the classroom is involving the exchange of information. We hope that we can foster that with all kinds of students, whether it's a high school student, a college student, an adult learner. Someone who's needs a short-term dose of information so they can take that and put it to work. We expect to create memoranda of understanding and I don't know which institution of higher education will be first, but I'm kind of betting on the community colleges. I think one of those will execute that MOU with us.
What, what do you expect in those MOUs?
Not much. I just want them to, to make it available and to allow their students and/or faculty to be involved. Virginia State University was my first effort. The dean of the college said, well, we have a lot of these. And she was telling me she probably wasn't going to do it yet. But once the big institutions, it's a kind of show me the money thing. They, so, so what? You know, I can only see cost in this to us. So we've got to get rolling financially before they'll probably come to the table. However, I've drawn the resources to the table anyway, through specialists doing crop work and working with turf and working with hops, hops for brewing beer. It's red hot. And so those specialists can be brought in through extension channels anyway. So even without the money, we can, we can bring them to the table by providing them a place to work and the support they need to work.
So have they started doing any of that?
Yes, sir. And I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Yep. So, and then the schools. I've got a memoranda in the hands of the, I think it's the attorney for the school system and I haven't pushed it enough to get a response, but it's not a, it's not a backing them in a corner and forcing anything. It's mostly to be aware and to allow people to participate and not asking them for much. So there's that, that logo that worked on. We, we incorporated two of the colors from the Carver school, school colors and some horticulture, some science there in the middle and some traditional agriculture there with your corn. So we think that means something. This is an actual photo of, of flowers being produced in a commercial greenhouse in Culpeper. The young man that has followed his father's footsteps. So his father was a grower. This young man's now a grower. His dad's more of a builder of greenhouses now, but Ben Van Wingerton has colored orchids in Whole Foods Grocery Store, for one example. And I saw them there and I told somebody shopping there, I said, I know the grower of those. And he's tied a little cup to that orchid so that you know how much water to give it once a week. And it's just, it's simple not to kill it with too much water. Those are his orchids and colors certainly does get the attention of the, of the customer. These are students at, at Virginia Tech in a greenhouse there. It's an outdated greenhouse, but it's what they've got. They're using it to the best ability. It's a research greenhouse. We'll probably build a research greenhouse, something small that we can have controlled situations and do work there. But an example of students that work in a greenhouse. This group, the ones we know as farmers, they're at risk. Their land's worth a lot of money. They're sixty and older. Some of them don't have children coming along behind. And folks are driving by them and throwing coke bottles at them, driving down the road and giving them all kinds of gestures. And they could get tired of this. And the grain producers are at risk financially. They had a couple of good years and it led some of them to go out on a, on a limb, so to speak. And so they're at break-even at best with current revenue projections for the grains that they produce. But this large equipment and this, this is a, this is a canned picture, but we've got equipment just like this in both Orange and Culpeper and neighboring counties. Wide heads, dual-wheeled tires, high efficiency and it takes that because of the small margins, it takes that for this group. So I think we need to do work with them so that they have resources and, and things they can depend on to make decisions for the next fifty years while they sort out what, what their future is. And this is one of our students at work. He's, he's the pathologist's master's degree student whom I lured to Culpeper under the auspices of the George Washington Carver Research Center with the access to large plot research. So the difference between the work that we'll do and the work done at the research station here in Orange is the plots at, at the station in Orange could be four, five of them in this room. But the plots that we'll do are as big as the station out there altogether. So we will be complimentary to their work and this student's busy collecting data and he's, I'm counting him as one of our students. He's Hillary Miles, Virginia Tech master's degree student. He wants to be a pathologist just like her. This is a picture off the internet, but it's the idea of what the commercial kitchen might look like. The lady that's running that, Janet Bearden, said she gasped when she saw it because she knew it meant lots of money. And so it is going to be lots of money. And maybe it's not that much stainless steel, but what's the commercial kitchen for? It's a research lab. It's a place to learn. And more than that, it could be a place for people to add value to their products, the further processed products that they currently sell. Let's say if there's excess of something, squash is a good example. I don't know what you do with squash except eat it fresh. But if there's extra, it doesn't bring much money once everybody's got it. So if you could do something with the extra when it's in a surplus and then sell it later, you could, you could foresee a benefit. The roast beef that's frozen in most freezers where someone has cuts retail for sale. The roast beef in the hamburger ends up being in the, so what can they do with that roast? Maybe they could, we could pre-cook it and sell it ready to eat. Maybe that ups the value and the consumption. That kitchen could be used for that. And here are Virginia Tech students busy at work. They're looking at beef tenderloin and some pork tenderloin and instructors giving them ideas about that muscle cut and what to do with it. And it cooks pretty good whole. I can tell you that, better than sliced. So these students are learning. They're, they've got the gear and the equipment and they're, they're in the kitchen to, to add to their value, the culinary skills. And we think in the culinary world, there's another aspect and it, so we have people returning to society from prison. So maybe culinary work, training prior to departure from prison, I don't know when you trust them, but I think before they get out. And so if they can come to us to, to gain skills before they depart prison, maybe they can get work in the, out in the, in the private sector. And that's just an idea. So we'll see how that works. I'm not making the rules up for those folks and, but I hope to, to draw that, that group into the education and the workforce readiness. This picture is special and I put it last for two or three reasons. One, we've got students, adult students, learning by doing. Under the guidance of the guy in the background near the tractor, he knows how to do and he's showing them how to do and telling them how to do. So that's Jim Hankins in the background and he's the brother of Andy Hankins who died unexpectedly. He was a good friend of mine. Agent in Madison County, went on to Virginia State University to be an alternative crop specialist. And just, he'd done his, what he needed to be here for. And so he, he passed to a heart attack unexpectedly. But Jim is kind of carrying on with Andy's legacy. But lastly, that's on land that my granddad owned. So he's looking down saying, you know, they're doing something with that old farm after all. So this is what Carver would have done. And so I say this is representative of Carver's ideals and leave it at that. Our partners thus far, and there are more, I'm digging for the old Battle Park logo. It's in somebody's possession somewhere, but they've got one. We need to have that on there. I think it helps to complete the, the group makes. The Regional Commission is a key part. I said it was regional and that Regional Commission has been a big partner in our feasibility study and in getting things up and running. And tomorrow, we'll get a report from the, the guy that's, that's running that feasibility study that the Board of Directors have an update on where we're at on progress with that. And so I told you we would address a couple of things. I'm not sure I've done it. The MOUs, for example. We would do as much to get, that, that MOU means as much about the folks watching us as it does for what, more, more so about the cooperators and the partners we have. We're trying to draw students from many educational places and get that cooperation going. Already working with FFA instructors. They've had a couple of regional contests there. Some of the, the teachers I understand say, well, this is an old school. It's not, but it worked perfect for the contest. It won being used during the week, had big shop spaces. It was central. And so two years running, I've been able to bring those, those students there and I count them as some of the students that have been learning at that facility. And I'll stop for questions because I can go on.
I'd just like to make a comment. The day that you all had the announcement.
I think you were there. I believe I remember seeing.
And I just wanted to say that the cross-section of people that you had attend that event and endorse it was phenomenal.
I appreciate that.
It was a very, very diverse group of individuals there that all tied together for the same outcome that you're looking for. And I commend you for what you've done and I'm sure you'll continue to do and what all these other people have contributed.
And I'm not going to the government, I'm not here for money. I'm here for your interest, eventually maybe, but for your interest in continuing keeping abreast of what's going on. And if you think of something that could help, let me know. There's money in our communities and in this country. I just have to make connections with those who have it to figure out that there's a place in this effort for them. And there's a gentleman, a gentleman that has given us the most money could have, he could have written a million-dollar check, but he's got it because he didn't give it up very easy. And so we've got to connect with those that do have it. And I'm headed to Fredericksburg to see Ms. Buffett and this workforce readiness and returning to, from prison is part of her interest. And if we can get the prison folks in, in the same, if they'll let them out six months ahead, day to day, to get some education, we'll give it to them. We'll give them a knife and let them cut up some meat or whatever. I don't know, you know. We're letting them use chainsaws and weed eaters. Why can't they work in the kitchen? Thank you for your time and your interest. And I've got a brochure for you and I'll leave you to your, rest of your agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. We lucked with the tires. My granddad was in the tire business, but I dealt with his tires.
Thank you, Carl.
They make good raised beds. That's great.
Alright, next item on the agenda is a public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No? Okay. Alright, next is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the Department Director Constitutional Officer reports. None. County Attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, first, first item, we had quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting about this Dominion Power Remington Pratt's reliability project. And some questions were asked as to what board, what the county can and can't do and what our role would be in this process. And so I just, I put together a quick overview. I hate PowerPoint and it would have only been four slides anyway. And so I didn't put a PowerPoint together. But I, I did want to point out, and, and everybody knows this, but sometimes the citizens don't quite understand the whole regulatory process. The chief entity that regulates Dominion Power in these lines is the State Corporation Commission. There is some overlap with other entities, some federal agencies and, and local government, as I'll mention in a minute. But the primary regulating agency is the Corporation Commission. There is however, quite a bit of state law on how the process for putting in electrical lines is done. The first thing that Dominion has to do, I think they think they've done it, maybe they have. Before filing for construction of a new line, anything over a hundred fifty KV, they must give us notice. And this is a quote from the state code, "A reasonable opportunity for consultation about such line." I know, I think, I believe Madison is taking the position that we haven't really had an opportunity for reasonable consultation on this line. That we were sort of announced, but that there hasn't been a reasonable opportunity for consultation. So what's the outcome if they don't do that? Not sure. One, one suggestion has been made that possibly could get a court injunction. I think that would be a major uphill climb, highly unlikely. Another alternative would be if they then filed to construct the lines at the Corporation Commission that you asked that the case be dismissed because they haven't complied with this. But, but it is a hoop that they're legally supposed to jump, that they give us reasonable opportunity for consultation as opposed to, I think, just announcing it and coming, making a presentation. So that's, that is an issue that to me is unclear, whether they have.
Are there cases that begin to define what that reasonable opportunity is?
Unfortunately, as far as I could tell, I couldn't find anything. In fact, I talked to the Madison County Attorney today and their little bit of research, they think it would be a case of first impression. And I couldn't find anything to the contrary. But that's alright. Case of first impression, that means that Dominion doesn't have any authority the other way either. So that, that is a potential issue. The, the second issue is pursuant to state law, we can in our comprehensive plan designate electronic transmission corridors. We have not done so. When we had, County Administrator and I had a discussion and it may be something we want to initiate the process on, is designating corridors. Now, and let me explain, we can't just designate a corridor. One of the things we have to do is consult with Dominion. But one of the conversations, the conversation we had is it may be a good time to bring Dominion in and that would force a discussion with them on what is the reason, what are the reasonable corridors for power lines in this community? As opposed to just this particular line driving the issue, we force a discussion with Dominion on a broader.
And this is transmission. So it's above a certain KVA, I think?
It's, it's over one fifty, I believe is what it is. Maybe one thirty. And there's three different standards in the state code. This may be the one thirties. I can't remember it, but, but it's either one thirty or one fifty. And we would, what we would do is we, our planning commission would initiate the process of designating transmission line corridors. Then we would initiate and Dominion would be by state law invited into the process. If they don't join the process, then they can't complain if they don't like our corridors. If they do join the process, then it makes it interesting for them. If this particular line doesn't match what they feel like would be reasonable corridors for future development. So just, just some thought. The, the other thing though is if we do put in corridors, if we do in our comprehensive plan, if, if that becomes an issue at the Corporation Commission, the, the onus is on us to prove that our corridor selections were, were correct. In fact, the, the state law says we would have to put on adequate evidence that our designated lines were sufficient for Dominion's future development needs.
And that's the only way you could do that is probably have Dominion agree to your corridors.
Will Dominion agree or you have your own electrical experts? You know, we hire our own experts too. So it, so initially, everybody goes, oh, we'll just put it in our comp plan. I'm just pointing this out that there is some complexity to putting in your comp plan. Because even if you put the transmission lines in your comp plan, I, I think we should perhaps initiate the discussions and bring Dominion in. But do understand, and I would think that the adequate evidence of Dominion agrees to where the transmission lines, I think that we have more than adequate evidence that they're sufficient. But um, do understand, and I would think that the adequate evidence of Dominion agrees to where the transmission lines, I think that we've more than adequate evidence that they're sufficiently covered. But I'm just showing you the comple- the, the complexity, the interrelationship that if, if we don't get Dominion on board agreeing to where those transmission lines would be, then it would be, the burden would be on us.
To prove that ours are valid.
That to prove that ours are valid.
And I was just, so have you seen cases where that was done by localities? I mean, I, I. Existing lines, I could see, find it's okay to take our future land use map and plot those on there. New lines involving both public and private property and, and other considerations. I mean, you, you're right back to where we are with the specifics of this case, I would imagine.
Well, and I think what, what the jurors, I've only seen a couple where they, they attempted to do this and basically what they said is the existing lines are the lines. So they kind of looked where there were already lines running and they put those in the comp plan as a corridor, saying if you can do anything else, you stick them in the same, in the same corridors. But and if Dominion a- as part of the process didn't object to that or signed off on that, then that might be an enforceable position down the road.
But isn't it, I mean, isn't the whole issue a, a moving target because as time passes and growth occurs in new places? I mean, you can't very well say that the lines that are designated in nineteen seventy-five are still valid in twenty twenty-five.
Because part of their argument is that they need this for grid security and redundancy and that's why they need to go in different areas that are designated.
Want to answer both those questions. It's under state law, every five years we have to look at our comprehensive plan and decide if it's still accurate. So theoretically, if we had a fifteen-year-old comp plan and had we hadn't addressed that, Dominion's going to say, your comp plan's so out of date that, that that's meaningless. And so unless we're kind of willing to refresh that information.
So we'd almost need.
Well, the comp plan is updated, but the, the information in it is not necessarily updated. I mean, we don't, we don't go back in every comp plan and, and.
Change everything.
No, no, but you have to at least analyze whether your, your transportation plan, whether the, the, the things you've done are still.
But my big, but my larger point is, is just because you put transmission lines in a comp plan, doesn't mean that that's where they, they're always going to have to stay. As time passes, there's going to.
Well, I would imagine that every five years, if you haven't consulted with Dominion on, on your.
You'd have to go through the process.
Yeah, which uh.
Well, and the, and the other thing I have not mentioned yet, but, but I will mention now is we can put it in our comp plan and the State Corporation Commission is perfectly free to ignore it. So just having it in our comp plan and even having Dominion sign off on it in our comp plan doesn't bind Dominion or the State Corporation Commission at the end of the day. Because the way state law is written, it says the, the Corporation Commission shall consider environmental, environmental impact. It shall work to minimize adverse impacts on scenic assets, historic districts, et cetera. And it shall consider our comp plan if we designate a transmission lines. It doesn't say they're bound by it or, or anything even close to that. It simply says that's a consideration. And ultimately, if the S, the Corporation Commission approves the lines, state law says that is deemed to be in compliance with our zoning and comp plan. Because one of the things I heard suggested is, well, maybe we make transmission lines a, a special use permit requirement. But if the Corporation Commission approves the line, it's deemed to be in zoning compliance. So your special use permit requirement is gone. Doesn't do you any good. So at the end of the day, the Corporation Commission has the final say. What, what's interesting is there was just a huge case in James City County that was just decided in, in the end of April. It was the uh, and it was a five hundred KV line that was actually coming across the James River in a section that was designated as a historic portion of the river. The line is visible from the Colonial Parkway. It was visible from multiple historic sites. Um, and it was James City County and also BASF owned a piece of property that they were doing a pretty major remediation on. And they were saying this is going to mess up our environmental remediation. The end of the day, the Corporation Commission ruled, you know what, it's the most viable and cost-effective route and we're approving it. The Virginia Supreme Court supported that, upheld that. With one little caveat, which did give the power company some heartburn. They said, this only applies to transmission lines, all the state law. You also want to build a substation and there's no mention of that. And the substation is subject to local zoning ordinance. And so the, the power company Dominion did get a little bit of, in fact, they, they asked for reconsideration. The Supreme Court denied it. And so, so the transmission lines themselves, the law is not real favorable, but the Supreme Court did throw the localities a bone. If they put in a substation, a switching station, anything other than lines, then at that point, those would be subject to our local zoning requirements.
I got a call from Doris Laki this afternoon. Uh, they had specifically gone and asked for a delay. Dominion had said no. Their planning commission had gone and asked for data in order to try to be, uh, redoing things with regard to a comp plan. And uh, Dominion said no. So Dominion is pursuing, uh, they will be tonight, I guess, uh, going ahead and. Deciding to pursue an injunction for a delay because of this business of not providing a, a.
Reasonable opportunity for consultation.
That's right. They're saying that the two months was, was not the thing. And since they really didn't come in and consult, they basically just said, here's our plan. That was the basis to say that they had not done this consulting. So.
Madison County's asking for an injunction?
Yeah, Madison County's going to ask for an injunction and she asked whether we would want to rejoin that.
And, and may I suggest that if we want to have that discussion, we do have legal matters closed session discussion or that we, we can further discuss whether we do want to join in that litigation.
There was, one, one thought occurred to me back on this consultation and, and it's moved that this media project away from it and have more of an abstract comment. If we reached out to Dominion to partner with us, to look at corridors and things. I wonder, one, what that does for private property interests that would be in the so designated corridor as to the future value of those lands without anybody buying them. Under the concept of inverse common condemnation where you've taken and you've, you've identified property that could be someday. A, a high uh, trans- electricity transmission land, what does that do for the property values? And would Dominion be so inclined to consult with us to even deem property within a line? So it, it kind of works against their interest to even consult with us to pre-select a route when it involves private property.
Well, and I don't think those lines are so, are, are property line specific, but.
But there, there, there are.
Areas.
Where you could see, yeah, my property kind of falls into that area.
But our comprehensive plan has all sorts of impacts like that.
Understood, but then that, that, from a Dominion standpoint, why would I want to start down that road necessarily?
Well, the other side is for us as well, the political fallout potentially on, on our side of us designating somebody's. Because it may be no power lines are ever built anywhere near there and yet.
Well, that's the thing. Why would an individual property, private property owner agree to, agree to something like this?
And why, and why would we, without any specific demand, uh, want to set up a corridor across somebody's property?
Uh, yeah, but you already have existing corridors.
Well, if you, if you stayed with the existing corridors, that's fine.
Well, and that's one of the approaches is to go to Dominion and say, hey, let's discuss these existing corridors. We want to designate them on our comp plans. So I was saying with jurisdictions that are doing it, that is sort of the route they're taking, is to say, okay, we've got these existing corridors. Let's meet whether these are adequate for the next X years. To meet all potential demand for, for expansion or increase in line capacities.
Any further discussions or questions? We can address this other things enclosed.
Okay.
Uh, oh, the next, you got another item?
Yes, so the, the next item, we had, we discussed this, I believe at a work session. And this would, if, if the board's in agreement, we would just ask it to be scheduled for a public hearing at some time that's convenient. Um, this was, if you recall, there was a presentation made about the purchase of body cameras for the sheriff's office. And the question arose is, it always does, how are we going to pay for this? And I suggested that there's a state code provision, which we're not taking advantage of, that allows us to assess a three hundred and fifty dollar fee for certain traffic infractions. Basically because it costs us money for the sheriff to go out and rescue squad to go out. And so the state law allows us to recoup a fee of up to three hundred and fifty dollars for reckless driving, driving on a suspended, driving with a no license, DUIs. Uh, certain types of collisions that are caused and we can assess this fee as a court cost of three hundred and fifty dollars and then that money comes back to the county. And we can just, could use that to help pay for these body cameras and, and the, the rough guesstimate that we made. Was it would probably generate between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year based on the number of infractions that would fall into this and the statewide average collection rates.
The, the one question, concern I have is it says that uh, driving on a suspended license where the person is convicted. People, law-abiding citizens are convicted on a regular basis of driving on a suspended license because of an oversight of turning in their tags. Their insurance payment didn't make it there on time and the state has suspended their license. That's my only concern with this is. We will be catching law-abiding citizens that. Got into a situation that, yes, legally they are responsible. However, uh, it happens on a regular basis to, to people.
But I, that brings me to, to a point that I, it appeared to me from the words that I read that, that these fines, whatever the number, three fifty or any of them. Can only be levied as part of a court order. The way, the way this is written, it says the court may order, it didn't say they have to, the quarter may order restitution. And, and I guess that was my question and, and if it's through the court, then that should deal with the, the situation you have, so I, I.
Right. Well, and you, what you have is you have what's called prosecu- prosecutorial discretion. And we have a very reasonable prosecutor here. And, and she's, I, we've, she and I have discussed this and, and in fact. I know we're on the record, I probably shouldn't say this on the record. She says she thinks our, our local judge would probably be loathe to on the driving on suspended's where it's not egregious. She said that's probably the one where he would be hesitant to give it the three hundred and fifty dollars. The DUIs are given, the reckless is probably a given. And, but she felt like our local judge probably would be reluctant to routinely grant him on the driving.
But from a process standpoint, the, the, this would only be imposed by the court.
Right, it's a court, it's a court cost.
It's not something we do automatically. The sheriff can't do it. Even the Commonwealth attorney, I guess, can't do it without.
No, it's part of the guilty plea, your honor, the county has this ordinance and please assess this three hundred and fifty dollar cost and, and the court could theoretically say, in this case, I don't want to.
I think that gives the, the leeway. You comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
So, so if the board's in agreement, we'll have it added to an agenda in the, in the not too distant future for a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, next is uh, County Administrator's report. Nothing? Okay. Next is new business, which is this uh, provision of a budget amendment for the, uh, where is it?
So Orange U Sports Foundation.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we had originally uh, said approved a request for forty-five hundred dollars for the uh, purchase of a mower. And what we're saying is now it's up to two thousand or more.
That's approaching the price of a new mower.
It's still a used mower that they're contemplating as far as we, as far as we know.
This is, this is one for citizen usage. The, the people that have kids in the sports program or whatever that will come up and use it in addition.
Well, it's not, not just anybody. I mean, it's, it coaches or other.
From what he says, the evening he was up here, it is people involved with the sports up there. Used one at that price, I'm, I have a little concern with. That's just me, but. You know, they came to us last year, said all they needed was what they got last year. They came to us again this year and said, oh, this is all that we're going to need. Well, we haven't even made it into the following budget year yet and they're asking for more than what they told us that they wanted.
Well, I think it was because Alan had called me and, and talked about it and in, in working on the thing, they missed something or another, but it was, it was a couple of grand more. In, in the whole scheme of things, when they initially set in, they had a ten thousand dollar budget. That ten thousand dollar budget disappeared at the point in time that they became part of the Parks and Rec and fell under Tim's umbrella. And so from time to time, they've come to ask for things. Alan, to me, has done an extremely good job in trying to be very frugal and, and make all the efforts he can to take care of the park. And the alternative is us. And it's a whole lot more than two thousand bucks.
You, you, you lost me there somewhere along the line. What do you think about a ten thousand dollar budget?
There was a line, there was a line item for Booster Park at ten thousand dollars a year.
Uh, where the county was going to give whoever's running Booster Park.
It was with the, for the R G Sports.
No, it was with mine. I had one here.
I'm still willing to share.
My.
Well, okay, so. This, this all happened on my sabbatical.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm not clear with the steps there, so. At some point, R G Sports became actually part of the rec department?
The agent, they're, they're under an agreement to maintain the park that the county's providing. If I'm correct, I'm going off memory here, provide the equipment for that maintenance. And they're having a ten thousand dollar uh, uh, item, line item available to purchase equipment, but then that was phased out.
But ten thousand dollars, I mean, that's, I mean, we certainly weren't figuring on ten thousand dollars of equipment purchases every year.
No, no, no. It had also included grass and fertilizer, bringing in dirt for the infield.
So basically it was made ten thousand dollars for purchasing uh, equipment or.
It's an MOU that, that, one of the terms in the MOU is that they can come each year and request up to ten thousand dollars for expenses, reasonable expenses that they incur. In, in operating, maintaining, whatever it may be. And so it's actually a, a provision in the MOU that the county and, and R G Sports signed. That authorizes them to come ask for up to ten thousand dollars.
And there's been no, there's been no other money expended this year other than this? So they, they didn't, they haven't spent any money on fertilizer or press?
No, well, they, they managed to take care of it themselves with the operation of the park and, and the money that they generated from uh, concession sales and whatnot.
And the original backstory was that we had R G, because this was one of the first things I did when I got here. The original backstory was. We were happy to have somebody else do this. And, and so they were doing most of the work and not really asking for money except for these larger equipment expenditures. We have, I mean, at the time I've been here, I haven't seen any requests for some of the, the smaller items they've been paying themselves, but the whole backstory was. With the, when, when the MOU was negotiated, that, that seemed like a reasonable allowance.
Well, there's, there's thirty-five years of backstory, but I won't go into that.
Well, there wasn't other backstories to the previous entity that was doing it, but.
Multiple backstories here, but.
Where, where my concern is.
But that's why the ten thousand was put in there, just to sort of, if they needed something since they're running everything for us.
Yeah, but my, my concern is, is that every time they come to us, this is all we need. We don't need anymore. You know, they said they had all the equip, the lawn service equipment they needed. Now, one thing, once it wears out, that's understandable, but. That's what they said last budget season. This budget season, they said, well, we have people that, you know, we can't let them use our equipment. Our new equipment, basically, so we want to have equipment for them to use because we're not keeping up with it, okay? I can assure you, if I don't do my research and I ask for something. When I come back and ask for about forty percent more, the rest of you are going to look at me and say, Jim? Why'd you just ask for this and say you didn't need anything else and then come back and ask for forty percent more? That's what concerns me. It's not.
Well, it's sixty-five hundred for a used mower is, is, it seems, I mean, it just seems very high for a used mower. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, if it's, if it's a mower that somebody drove around the yard one time and decides that they didn't like the color of it. So it's, it's only got five hours on it, then I can understand. But I mean, if it's, I don't know.
Part of the rationale is it has to be a commercial grade, not an estate grade. I, I went through this the last time around. I went down and checked on it. So that's one of the reasons that it's more expensive.
Oh, I, I understand why it's more expensive than, than, than what I used to move my grass. Oh, I, I understand why it's more expensive than, than what I used to move my grass. It's one of those.
Well, we've, we've already granted them, but we agreed to forty five hundred. Question now is do we agree to another two thousand? Can I get a motion to that? So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for purposes of additional discussion.
Now we go for more discussion, okay.
Well, I, I just, I had, it sounds like Teal has some, some additional information. I didn't talk to any of them about, I didn't, I didn't see this until this evening, really, so.
Yeah, I just, I just saw it when I, I got it, I think it was emailed to us.
Yesterday. We were still, one of, one of the challenges recently in this is trying to get an invoice of what the amount was. We were pretty challenged with getting that in till like yesterday or within the last day or so.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. Is this a machine they've already bought? Is this a mach, is this a different machine than the one they had priced a couple of months back at the budget time? Do we know any of these?
I, I think Brian knows.
Well, I'm gonna say we've been challenged on what was after the fact and what was before the fact. I know part of this was since working with through Teal and such. Well, and I, I'm not trying to.
Under the tires.
I'm gonna move over this way, just.
I mean, Alan called me and, and, and told me there was, there was something another going on, and, and I can't tell you, I was on a forklift, but.
How much did you pay for the forklift?
Twenty seven thousand dollars. But, no, there was, there was something another in, in the thing, and it was gonna be a couple grand more, and did I have heartburn over it, and I did not.
Well, I, I guess bottom line, my concern is, 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 is really, is there some funny business going on on the dealer end of it? Some dealers, when they find out government agencies buying it, suddenly come up with reasons why it should cost more, or maybe there should be, maybe, maybe this one's not really what you need, you need this one over here. That, that's, and if, and if, and if there isn't some oversight on it, then that kind of stuff happens. Two, two thousand dollars is not gonna break Orange County one way or the other, but it just seems like it is kind of odd, the process that we've gone through. And we don't really, nobody seems to really know, sitting up here at this table, what really happened, and I don't know, I just think we should know what happened before we vote on it.
And I guess.
If they've already bought it, then what's another two weeks?
And, and I'll walk back a little bit. One, one of the challenges we've had with this is we have an agency relationship with Orange County Sports. In return for funding some of the capital equipment out there recurring, on a recurring basis, they take care of the grounds. Certainly saves us a huge amount on labor costs, I begin to tell you.
With assistance from the Central Virginia Region.
The region, the workforce, yes, sir, thank you. The, the other challenge is, is that they've been the ones acquiring this equipment and doing trades with some equipment, and so it's not going through our procurement function, and, and.
Maybe it should.
But that wasn't the relationship that we were had, so we're, we're working as a staff level best through that because we've got documentation, we've got internal controls and things, and, you know, I, I think at the end of the day, they need equipment, I think there's general agreement on that.
And we agreed to, agreed to ten thousand a year, roughly?
That was originally, and then, then I never, I did not budget it as a line item because it was come when you need for us to, to, to make it, rather than having a fixed amount of money out there that was available.
That they would spend all of.
Yeah, I think the MOU says may come annually and request up to, it doesn't say they're entitled to. I think the language, if I remember correctly, is request up to.
I, I would just like to see a little more prudent research before they become, become before us from now on.
Make a suggestion to try to get us, is that any, any future dollars this board may commit for equipment that would be run through the county's procurement? With bids and solicitations and things like that. They can give us a specific.
Are you, are you making a motion to the table?
No, no, I, I'm not making that in motion, I just, I, we have come to a much better understanding throughout the county of researching and justifying our expenditures, and.
Okay.
Well, and, 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 you know, the reason Orange County Sports is in charge out there now is because the county made a change from who had been in charge out there before. One of the reasons we had such a gigantic problem out there before was nobody was willing to actually look at what was going on, and it, and it became, you know, it was, it was almost like un, un-American to suggest that there might be anything wrong going on, okay? And I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything wrong, but when you're, but when you've got a private organization that's spending public funds, I think it's very reasonable for us to be very aware of what's happening. You know, it's not so much the amount of money, if we spend that much every minute of the day, but it's going through the procurement policy and, and presumably it's being handled the right way. In this case, that's not happening, and so it, it does give me some, it does give me some heartburn. And again, I was also not aware of it until halfway through the meeting here, but I finally.
That's something we can.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I.
Yeah, when you said something to me earlier.
That's why I said, it didn't seem to me like something that would go on the consent agenda, it, it deserves some discussion.
Is, is, is a reasonable step forward that, that we maybe we modify the MOU or at least instruct that henceforth that this expenditure of public funds will be, will follow or be done by whichever the, the county procurement process. I'm not, it sounds to me like they probably have already done this, and so we're ratifying, not approving. And, and that's, that's just where we are.
Right. If I can make a suggestion to the board, I, I would agree, at least from a standpoint is, at the end of the day, they're looking to get equipped. And we want to make sure that they have reasonable amount of equipment, not, not, nothing that can require a lot of repair, but then also not, you know, high end, but what will get the job done. I would feel more comfortable, given some of our recent experience in trying to get invoices, and I'm looking at the finance director, is that, and I don't know if you need to go to extend amending the MOU, is that, is that next time they come, that your approval of those funds are subject to the acquisition through the county's regular, normal customary procurement policy.
I think if you tell them that orally, we don't have to amend the MOU to make that be that way.
Just give us the specifications of what you need, then, Mr. And, and I've got every confidence, we'll, we'll, we'll try to meet those specifications.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frin?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
But if they come back next year wanting to buy a lawn mower, it's gonna be nay.
All right.
Seriously.
Okay.
If there's, if there's another lawn mower either next year, it's gonna be a nay vote.
All right, okay.
Weed trimmer, maybe, but not a lawn mower.
Okay.
Eight thousand dollar weed trimmer.
I'm gonna try to finish the rest of this before we go to closing session. Okay, old business renewal of the health and dental insurance benefits.
I'm allowed, Mr. Bradley. But you know it.
Okay. At last, at our last regular meeting, we had Carrie Bartlett here from Digital Benefits Administrators, who went over a presentation, and she presented the recommendations of the benefits committee, which is basically for the upcoming plan year, which starts October one, to eliminate our HMO plan that has no deductible, and to change out our Key Care fifteen plan, which also has no deductible for a Key Care twenty five. That would give us three plans that we offer employees, two with a five hundred dollar deductible, and the third is a three thousand dollar high deductible plan that also is paired with an, a health savings account. Under this scenario, if the employees make the selections that we made some assumptions that that they would select one plan if they had been in another plan, this would leave about eighty seven and a half percent of the county and social services employees having no change in their contribution or actually having a reduction. There would be some increases ranging from like three to ten point thirteen percent. So there, the plans themselves are increasing, but making these changes really does help mitigate that impact on the, the majority of the employees and for the county as well.
Okay. We still see about a six percent increase, correct?
Right.
Uh, question, and maybe it's just a technical, do the, uh, the physician co, uh, co-pays apply towards the deductible?
No, I believe those are separate.
Okay, all right, okay.
But somewhere in here, I think it says that, that even the new plans have no physician co-pay. Is that correct?
No, no.
No, they, there are physician co-pays, and.
For the Key Care twenty five?
It says all, all the employees will have a planned deductible, regular doctor visits will still result in, will only result in a co-pay.
Right, so the first time you go to the doctor, you don't have to pay, you know, if it's a hundred dollar doctor visit, you don't have to pay the hundred dollars and have it count toward your deductible. You're still only gonna pay like twenty five dollars.
Does, and the seventy five applies towards your deductible?
Right.
Okay, all right.
The deductible only applies for inpatient hospital, hospital usage.
Okay.
If you go to the doctor, there is no deductible.
Okay, so, so the, so the idea is, because, uh, is, if they go to the doctor, go to regular doctor care, they get, they, they only pay their co-pay if they start going to the emergency rooms.
Right.
Which, which hits, they, they're only gonna be, they gotta come up with five hundred dollars for the deductible. If they go to an urgent care, they gotta pay their fifty dollar co-pay. So we're encouraging them to go to the doctor or to urgent care versus going to the emergency room.
Exactly.
But I think the, well, some plans are different, but I think the, the emergency room costs do apply towards a deductible.
That's right. But I'm saying, if you go to the emergency room, you got a fi, you know, you got a five hundred dollar bill. Or if you're a family, you got a thousand dollar bill. If you go to the urgent care, you got a fifty dollar bill. And that's, that's sort of the, getting the, what do you call the, the term, consumerism?
Consumerism, right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Anybody like to make a motion? I have a motion to approve this. Have a second? Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly want to recognize Glenda and, and Digital Benefits and Karen, everybody that's worked on this, particularly on the school side. This was not an easy thing to undertake because it's, it's, it can get pretty complex pretty quickly. And so I've been real pleased, and I think you can see the results of their hard work and, and what you have and what you just took action on. I would also point out to the board, we recommended the benefits that having two members of the school board and two members of the board supervisors work with the benefits committee as this next year starts going on, because we'll be back here again this coming, next year to do this, and I think having two, two members of each board engage in this would, will help us, at least from the policy side. So at the point we're ready to impanel that, we'll be back with members who all want to select representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next board comment? I do have one item. I got a letter from VACO asking, uh, for the county to submit a Christmas tree ornament. The Executive Mansion is, uh, is going to be having a, uh, their Christmas tree decor in celebrating Virginia's localities. And the objective is to highlight our localities by featuring handmade ordinance from each of our ninety five counties, thirty eight cities, and a hundred and ninety one towns to decorate the large tree in the mansion's ballroom. And VACO has forwarded this on to us, asking if we would like to participate. We're not required to. And they've got some guidelines for the, uh, for the Christmas tree ornament. I was wondering whether or not we would want to encourage our local artisans to, to do this, possibly have the Center for the Arts hold a, uh, competition or?
Either that, or I would like to suggest possibly the a local photographer's picture of the J six eleven going past Montpelier as possible ornament suggestion. Very nice picture, and I'm sure that we could have that ornament done.
I just, I just didn't want to get us in the business of, of deciding on an ornament and trying to leave it to some other entity like the Center for the Arts or somebody else and allow anybody to compete.
Is this supposed to be a non-party ornament?
Yes. It is supposed to represent our county. Whether you.
I think your suggestion, maybe the county administrator would like to contact the art center and see if they're interested either using students or.
Well, they, they, they're saying don't use children because they're planning to do a children ones.
I mean, art, art students, not.
Art students, sure, I mean, and, and the thing would be, the county would be recognized and the artisan himself would be recognized on it. And I'm not sure that some artisan who, who gets his, uh, his Christmas tree ornament on the, uh, on the mansion's Christmas tree wouldn't be able to use that for his own marketing, saying, hey, I'm, you know, I just, I didn't want us getting into it much more than maybe, uh, being the guy that says, yes, we're thanking, thanking the artisan for producing this, and we would forward it on to the, to the governor's office.
Mr. White suggests I can contact the art center and see if they, through their network, can put it out that this is, board would be willing to support that, certainly recognizing.
Recognizing it. I'm not looking for any funds.
And we'll, we'll see where that can go. I will second that motion. I, I got enough sense of the board.
Okay, all right, I, I didn't, you know, I figured if we could keep one, uh, doing nothing more than a, at some point a resolution or something, saying that we, we, we thank the artisan or whatever. Okay. Any ca, questions on the informational, or anybody else has board comment? Any questions on the informational items? Okay, do we have any appointments to any of the boards? Okay, any questions about the calendar? Okay, could I get the words for?
Well, the calendar has a schedule of public hearing.
Yeah, we do, that's right.
The, the planning commission's having a public hearing on Germania Wilderness Area Plan next week. So if we want to kind of keep this tracking along, we'll have to take action to schedule that. For the.
What's the timeframe?
Didn't put a date on it. They're having it on the eighteenth. You all want to go through what they're, they've made some revisions, if those are revisions, or, Mr. Crozier could probably.
Revisions are overall seem to be very good, nothing of any great substance.
Just in, making some revisions to the comp plan to incorporate it, the GWAP into it?
Yes, making those revisions and adding some reference maps and some wordsmithing is truly, um, I, I think they actually worked through it very well and did a very nice job on it.
Maybe, um, kind of maybe outline this, that we would present to the board on the twenty third, what they, if they take action that night to recommend, we could do it on the twenty third. Then we could either, I guess, schedule it for the fourteenth of July or the twenty eighth of July, would be the next two available meetings.
I'm gonna be away on the twenty eighth.
Be a few, the fourteenth.
Fourteen, okay.
July.
Okay.
Be three weeks.
Then we'll do it July to fourteen.
All right, do I have a motion? All right, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, scheduled for the fourteenth.
Now the special word.
All right, are you ready?
Now he can read his thing.
All right, well, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss the following matters in closed session. One, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And two, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven eleven, A five, and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed session, the board now moves to go into closed session.
So moved.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Okay. Call meeting back to order. Would you read the words, please?
Sure. Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Framing?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
All right, I'll entertain it at the moment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.